With the invocation and pledge of allegiance, is there someone here who would like to do the invocation?
A pledge of allegiance, there are pledge of allegiance?
The invocation.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I don't want to take it all, just by wants.
Come on, I did it, you did a very good job.
Okay, all those who would like to, please, I'll go ahead. The award, we give you Thanksgiving for this beautiful day, we give you Thanksgiving for this nation, Thanksgiving for our freedom, Thanksgiving for our government's self-determination, Thanksgiving for this little town, and pray, Heavenly Father, that you will give us your guidance, civility, and good judgment as we try to do the best we can for this community, all in your precious name, amen. Who would like to leave us in the bunch?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and I give you your authority for which to change one vision, one principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is April 25, 2025, it is now 6:01 PM, we are at the Port Royal Town Hall on King Street. This is a regularly scheduled town council meeting. Will the town manager please call the roll? Mayor?
Present.
It's Golden.
Present.
It's Wilkerson.
Present.
And Elizabeth Schenault.
Present.
Thank you, we have a forum. Are there any amendments, or changes on the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I have received a request that we discuss festivals at some point.
Pardon me?
Festivals at some point.
I believe that's on the agenda.
Is it? I didn't see it. I don't see it.
No, it's not on the agenda. Okay, would you like to put festivals as discussion items, make it 4-7-2?
Thank you.
4-7-2. Okay, any other changing? All in favor, sure, motion, who'd like to make a motion to accept the amended agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the amended agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Monica Schenault, seconded by Donna Wilkerson, to accept the amended agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? No, I'm sorry, we need roll calls. Monica Schenault?
Yes.
Donna Wilkerson?
Yep.
Angela Golden?
Yes.
Alex Long, yes, motion passing amendments, thank you. Next, we have training demonstration.
We just go back and mention that David Carpenter is absent?
Probably.
For the record?
Yes, council member David Carpenter is not here tonight, he has a medical issue. Anything else? Thank you. Next on the agenda is training demonstration by Caroline Emsom, if you later, that was to be arranged by Mr. Carpenter, so we'll have to bypass that this evening. Okay, we will postpone that. Public comment?
I do have public comment from Mr. Guzik.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else has any, but I'll read his off. Said he wanted to be at the meeting, he's engaged, and he was going to try to make it, he might be late. Two items, he was hoping to be discussed, the Fall Festival Pirate Day event, and hoping that the town will partner with HPR on this. The other item is to see what the timeline is on the final improvements to the town green. Angela Golden's plan had shown an extension of the playground with added features for the kids. It looks like that is the only item that's outstanding. Hope it's a good meeting tonight, and then he said, please also mention that HPR will be featured on WTBR CBS6 tonight at 11:00 PM, and again on Saturday and Sunday regarding John Wilkes Booth's final days in Port Royal. The May Fair event has been canceled, they had some issues with people that were going to be doing it. So they're going to be coming for 4th of July, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Public comment from Mr. Phil Guzik is accepted and noted. We have no other public here. Let's see, reports members of town council, the mayor, the mayor attended a session titled Go Virginia, Go Virginia, Mr. Anzavino is familiar with, I think, and that is economic development for various sections of Virginia. Our area geography goes from, well, Gloucester in Matthews County, Stafford, Spotsylvania. Thank you. Everything in the Middle Peninsula, Northern Neck and Radcliffe. The mayor met Congressman Redman again, and Mr. Congressman Redman knows where Port Royal is, and should we have a problem, firmly believe that he would help us out. Met with several others, noted that daycare is an issue, healthcare is an issue as well in rural areas, and those are two issues that hopefully we can bring to the forefront of the comprehensive plan, and have those as goals. Hope vitality of a town to be at the hub, the center of a geography for services that are needed, and indeed, we learned that daycare is needed, and obviously, if we get just a small urgent care, that would be beneficial to not just the town, but the people. That's it, of course, the other council members agree. Those are my comments. Monica Schenault?
Well, I would just like to say that you have three people sitting at this table who just have birthdays. Birthdays, so for celebration, myself, Donna, and John.
Happy birthday.
I don't know your birthday or your birthday, but thank you, and I thought, since there were three of us, we better actually say something.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
May all have a continuous, another great year round the sun.
David Carpenter is absent, Donna Wilkerson?
I have no reports at this time.
Angela Golden?
I don't know if this is the time to report on what's going on with the town green, or at another time.
I wish we had put that as a separate.
She's got the signs on there.
Separate item, but we have it as an action.
She has signs.
I don't know, I was going to address the public comment, because there is a big update. I don't know at what point.
Yeah, thank you. And we amend the agenda one more time, and quick discussion item 4-7.3, and let's go.
Can we just expand, 4.7.1?
Town green signage. Well.
Town green issues.
And issues, okay, we'll do that. By consensus, is that okay? Thank you. That will be. Anything else, Ms. Golden?
No.
Thank you. Consent agenda minutes of the January meeting, we could not find the tape, the recording for the January meeting on the tape recorder, that's still pending. The March minutes, that's another issue. Mr. Anzavino, could you explain about minutes for March in our new health?
Yep, a little bit later in the meeting, I'm actually asking your permission, or actually informing you that I've already made the decision to bring somebody on board, just for a short period of time, to help us with the minutes. You know, within the 10 hours per week that you pay me, and the amount that you pay me, it's not productive to get the minutes under that contract, nor is it realistic, given what I've, you know, stepped into, as well as other things. So we have a local person, it's listed in the agenda, it was sent out in your packet to review. The memorandum had the description of the individual. Albers, 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 is going to be working, she works, she does the minutes for historic Port Royal. A delightful young woman, I talked to her last Saturday, and we set the deal. She will work and complete the minutes at a rate of $20 per hour, as opposed to $80 per hour. And so, she's working on those minutes now, she's now, she's working off the YouTube video, because we still do not have a recording, and I haven't spoken to her this week, but I know she is working on them. We'll have those for you next month.
Okay, while we're on that subject, would someone, do we need to have a motion to formally adopt her and pay her?
I've got, I've got that down here as temporary support services under 04-4.6.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Then we're at financial reports. Does the town manager have any comments on the financials?
I have a little bit more time to spend on the financial report, this is done around, I laugh, because, you know, it's, it's not the most financial report from the standpoint of readability, but really, your collections of taxes and revenues at the three-quarter mark of the year. So a little bit over the collections, and that is, a little bit longer than that by the end of the year, because of the coming of Royal Farms, they're, they're really showing some strong revenues. I don't go into detail on that, but they're starting to come some strong revenues. Your expenses are, many of them are under, are under expended, so, and with the, oh, actually, with the, with the cash reserves, CDs, your bank balances that you have in the bank, which we're going to touch on that a little bit later, because I can't access any of your accounts, we'll touch on that a little bit later as well. The town is financially healthy, and you're not in any, you're not in desperate straits. I've been at places where we had to count pencils, and you, it's not to say that, you know, you need to go out and start spending money wildly, but the fact of the matter is, your budget's in good shape from a revenue collection standpoint, from an expenditure standpoint, and from the cash reserves that you've built over a period of time.
Thank you. Council members, any council members have questions, comments?
Well, I know we're going to discuss this later, but the ARPA funds being on the sheet has an outgoing expense of $23,273 in fourth sense this month. It appears that that came out of our general funds.
That's, typically, what local governments do, is look at it, in a way, we haven't had a chance to work with Jack Irvin very much, but at a point in time, you'll be making a, you'll replenish the general fund, but I haven't yet done the CDs to determine where the money from the ARPA funds, what CD it is, or which CDs they are, okay?
Point of fact, it doesn't matter, there is no quote-unquote "CD designated" for ARPA, no one CD designated.
So, so let me understand. Okay, so, all the cash that you have in reserves, unless it's designated water, okay, if you have a CD, that's, everything fits together.
Right.
So somebody should be keeping an accounting of, okay, so out of that, your ARPA expenditures will come. Okay, so you won't need to do any transfers or anything, other than you'll have to cash a CD to replenish the general.
Correct.
Okay. That's all, okay.
And the key to it is, the balance sheet is the ledger, if you will.
Yep.
And, and the balance sheet says that our water accounts have X number of dollars, and then the corporate.
Yeah, I'm used to a little bit more sophisticated level of accounting and transferring of funds and things like that, so we can work.
It's a little misleading.
Pardon me?
I said it's a little, little confusing, a little misleading when it's got it there, that it does look like it came out of
Right, and it puts us at a negative balance.
Yeah, that, that's been a problem since the very beginning, ask Accounts Inc. to set up ARPA money as a separate, just like they have water accounts, as a separate account, that ARPA money should have been set up as a separate account, that never was.
I'll see if we can go back and adjust the, see if she can adjust that. So, she did make, she did make a change in the budget, in the financial report, I believe, this month. She does show an ARPA line, she wasn't even showing an ARPA line in the past, so we do have an ARPA line in the budget, in an expenditure category. That's under, on the first page, under ARPA funds, that's the $23,273.
I have three pages of ARPA data from Accounts Inc., and I can't get any of it from actual. I'll leave this with you if you like it.
Yeah, I'd like it. If Miss Golden and I have worked very closely, based upon the, and I'll go over the whole ARPA history, because I traced it back. Everything has been done from the town side the right way, in the best way possible, and it's community this size. The accounting has been just abysmal, as far as how it's been handled by Accounts Inc., and how it's been, how it was set up. It should have been, there should have been a little bit more leadership to get in there, set up the account, say, this is what we got, get a, get a line item in the budget, and then work through the process of the expenditures, that wasn't done. But, we'll go back and we'll get that, we can fix that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're still on financials?
Yeah. Do you need a motion, corporate?
Are there any questions or comments further?
I have to have this, if I want to look at it, I can't just, yeah, it's okay. We'll go by whatever we want.
And something very important for your benefit, and that is, if you have something that, that you think is a red flag, you have a question about, you can always contact Mr. Anzavino, or myself, or, I, I think it, probably better one of us, and then we can contact Accounts Inc. But, but just because you don't get it tonight, Ms. Wilkerson, and if you think it's important, it will be addressed. Okay? Is that fair? Okay, is there a motion to accept the financials?
I'm making a motion to accept the financials.
Thank you, motion made by Angela Golden to accept the financials, is there a second?
I'd like to amend that, just to say, with the disclaimer for the ARPA funds, that we are not negative $3,000 for this month.
Point of clarification on your request to amend the motion. It's not really that we're negative, it's, as Mr. Anzavino pointed out, an exercise in terrible, terrible accounting. They're, the people at Accounts Inc. are lovely, wonderful people, I love them, but they're bookkeepers, they're not CPAs. You know, it's QuickBooks, it, it, it's.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and we're going to get that script.
I agree, but this is an official document, and in the way that this is written, if somebody was looking at it, they would think that we are, yes. And that's all I want to say, a disclaimer, that the ARPA funds have a separate funding source, and it needs to come off of this, that's all I'm saying.
Very good, therefore, to put this into the minutes, and recognize for the importance you attach to it. The maker of the motion to accept the financials was Angela Golden. The maker of the motion except an amendment to that motion, such that the motion is made subject to the caveat, the ARPA funds must be properly recognized and dealt with. Does that solve what you want? Properly recognized and dealt with.
Or appropriate funding source.
Or appropriate funding source.
I'm making, I make a motion to accept the amendment. I can't repeat everything he said, again, I make a motion to accept the amendment.
Thank you, motion made by Angela Golden to accept the amendment made by Monica Schenault. Is there a second, Ms. Wilkerson, from you to that amendment to the motion?
I thought she was seconded.
I asked, only asked for the amendment.
I know seconded.
Thank you, discussion, is there any discussion, I hear none. We're just voting on the amendment to the motion, and then we'll vote it on the motion, okay? The amendment to the motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, we can't do that, I'm sorry. Monica Schenault, how do you vote? Donna Wilkerson?
Yes.
Donna Wilkerson votes affirmative, Angela Golden?
Yes.
Angela Golden votes affirmative, Mr. Long votes affirmative, motion passed on amending the amendment to the motion. We now have the motion on the floor, the motion stands on the floor, presented, is there a second to the amended motion?
I second it.
Monica Schenault seconded the motion, discussion, any discussion, hearing none. Ms. Schenault, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkerson?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Long votes yes, thank you, motion passed. Or no. Report concerning town attorney, Mr. Anzavino.
Mayor, members of council, I tried to send as much of these materials out in your package beforehand as possible, so you'd have an opportunity to maybe review them in advance, and if you have, that's fine. You have, in your hard packet here, in front of you, the same information I sent out, I think it was Tuesday evening or Wednesday morning. I searched, I contacted a number of potential candidates to serve as your town attorney. It's important that you have legal representation as a town, because you've got a lot of things going on. First of all, you've got a comprehensive plan update coming down the pike, you've got zoning issues that may need to have some questions responded to by a legal source, and someone at a higher level than your town manager. I've been, as I walked through the budget, and it's in my budget message, which is in your packet here, and I didn't get out until today, I apologize for that. There will probably be a need to have some more aggressive collection of business licenses, and possibly meals tax, and who that's handled by, your town attorney will have some advice on. But the fact of the matter is, it's important to have a town attorney for a community. Unfortunately, that's the way the world works today. Your former town attorney, FDN Wiley, resigned, as did your previous town attorney. And so I reached out to the forefirms of the general area, I also reached out to some of the small towns in the area, the town of Montrose, the town of Whitest, around Kilbarnik, and they have individuals who, in the community, that don't really want to expand their horizons of those small towns. So, I contacted the forefirms, Rhian Tavis and Pandak out of Woodbridge. Sharon Pandak was a former Prince William attorney, she would have been ideal, she's an expert in land use and local government stuff. They closed their doors on March 31st, because of the workload, and because their, like me, getting more senior in years. Also contacted FDN Wiley, your former attorneys, they have heavy workload, declined to provide a quote. Also reached out to Mark Flynn, Mark Flynn has submitted a proposal, Mark Flynn, I've known for a number of years, he was the City of Winchester attorney. He was an attorney, he was the attorney for the Virginia Municipal League for a number of years, he's been the state aviation commissioner, heading up the aviation department, he's back in practice, those, those appointments come and go with elected officials at the gubernatorial level, so he was not reappointed with the current governor. But, he is currently representing King William County, and he, he's a really good, he's a sole practitioner. He's really good to work with, I've known him for a number of years. I also have a proposal from Sands Anderson, which is a larger firm in Richmond. They are a comprehensive firm, they can handle everything from litigation to civil rights issues, to human resources issues, to land use issues, you name it, they can do it, because they've got an attorney on board. They're mostly made up in their local government practices, former local government attorneys. They kind of have a little bit higher price. Mark's at a rate of $300 per hour, doesn't charge any expenses for travel. Sands Anderson ranges from $260 to $450, dependent upon what level of attorney you need. It's all included in the proposals, which are included in your packet. I don't think you need to make a decision tonight on anything, because there's a lot of information to read here. I would urge you to read through this, and set some time aside in the future, interview one or both of these attorneys, so that you can make a decision.
They come up here for free?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I had a question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
This would be on as-needed basis, not as a?
This is not a retainer, it's, it's in the memo, it's, it's on-call basis, when you need them, they come up, and give you the advice, they go back. But they are attorney of record, but there's no retainer, you don't get any number of hours, so you have to expect.
And they would be willing to go to port, if they had to, like on a?
If they had to, you know, if, if, if the town is sued, you're, you're insured by the Virginia Municipal League, and they will appoint counsel for a number of different areas of litigation. My service intermanager in Percival, they appointed an attorney to represent the town in conjunction with some aspects of the litigation, so that's part of your premium that you pay.
I was thinking about more so on the local level, like if we had to go with the violations and things like that.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Well, yes.
Both of them would be willing to do that because all the attorneys we've had before wouldn't do that.
I specifically, I knew that. I specifically said to both firms, I said, this is not a retainer of engagement. And I said, this is an on-call engagement. And they both agreed to that. Okay.
Excellent reading material. I know. I got to forty pages and I was like, uh, later. I did read Mark Flynn, but, and I'll read it from now that you printed it off. Thank you very much.
Town council members, by consensus, I think we need a motion. Would you all agree that we have Mr. Flynn and someone from Sands Anderson come up and speak to us at our May council meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, let's go around. Uh, Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Wolkerston?
Yes.
Ms. Schnold?
Yes.
Mr. Long, yes. By consensus, then, we've agreed to request Mr. Flynn and someone from Sands Anderson to come to our meeting in May. And we'll put that very far part of the agenda. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Excellent.
Uh, let's see. Town attorney, we're back to Ms. Anzavino. Month report of activities.
Okay. Uh, I've included in your package, uh, my, this is a monthly update. I, I used to do it on a weekly basis, but writing a report on a weekly basis for the level of activity here isn't really practical. So you'll get it on a monthly basis. Just real quick on finance, you've got your draft fiscal year '26 budget and I'll go over that a little bit in a little bit. The audits are still ongoing. I've discovered the fiscal '21 audit and have it under review. I'm talking to Virginia Resources Authority because they're breathing down the town's neck for audits. I'm also talking to your current auditor about completing the fiscal '22 audit, getting that to the council for review and approval. Then I've talked, I'm trying to talk to firms to seek a proposal or seek proposals for your fiscal '23, '24, and '25 audits because you're falling way behind. It's not a real big problem here because you've got such a small budget. But I can tell you, when I went to, when I was at Bowling Green, they were four or five years behind. And they're still digging out because their records were in terrible shape. Your records are in a little bit better shape. And you do have Accounts Inc., which has a lot of the information readily accessible. So, but it's, it's important to get those going. As soon as I get those proposals, if I get some, we'll, we'll get that to you so you can talk to these auditors and see what level audit they're going to perform for you. Because I know it's important for you to have accurate and true accounting of what your expenses, what your revenues have been, what the activities have been, and to make sure that there's no, uh, no deficiencies in the accounting of public funds. So...
May I ask again, who is asking for the audit?
VRA. There's a letter in your packet, which is at the end of the packet. It's a communication. I just pull the slogan, you know, I'm not willing to hide things away. So VRA is, you know, on, and also the US Department of Agriculture. Now fortunately, we have a person that I corresponded with. She is now out on six months' leave. So it's kind of cool. It's cooling its jets a little bit, giving us a little bit more time. We coded all of your invoices and your, and catalog your revenues. We've got them at Accounts Inc. Your revenue collections are real healthy for this time of year and your expenditures are really pretty low. Technology issues. I have an information technology person who specializes in smaller public entities who works with the town of Whitestone, which is about the same size as, uh, Fort Royal. Coming in on May the 8th, which is a Tuesday, he and I will spend some time together. He's going to assess your system. We're going to look at security issues. He's going to give us a suggestion of recommended improvements. And he's going to help me crack some of the passwords, I hope, that we're, we still need to crack. So he will be coming in, very, very efficient guy, really good guy to work with. I've talked to Davis and Associates about, as I said, about the audits. They, they are moving along with them, but I've got a sense, I did a little research on them and they do a lot of private accounting as well, but I think they got sidelined by April 15th, probably taxes. So I'm gonna reach out to her again next week to see exactly where we are because she promised me the fiscal '22 audit some time ago. I'm preparing summaries of the town's law, business licenses. I prepared summary of town business licenses as well as meals tax, who's paying meals tax, and tracking the revenues for meals tax on a monthly basis to make sure that they're up to date. I've also set up separate files for all the meals tax collections that we received. There's nothing in the files on that. So you have the hard copies of that here in the files for your new manager to examine when they come in and know that folks are, you know, meeting the requirements of the ordinance.
Excuse me, I have a question else.
Yes, with the cigarette taxes, I know that that is handled by a, a third party. But is, would there be a file set up for tracking for that as well?
Yeah.
Because it's my understanding we have a fourth business that is the selling cigarettes.
Yeah, I saw that.
Who's the fourth business?
The one on the, by the water?
The tobacco place?
They're not on the list.
Yep. You, you're a representative of the cigarette tax board, right?
I think they sell most cigarettes.
And I think you...
They should still be taxing for the...
No, I said, I think they sell the most. I mean, a lot of people stop there for cigarettes.
Oh, really?
I've never seen any cars there.
That's what I was thinking.
And I think you've notified the cigarette...
I did notify them when I officially said, because you saw they sent us, somebody else was on our list that didn't belong on our list. And I was like, wait a minute, we're supposed to have this business, this business, and this business. But I couldn't remember the cigarette, the vape shop's name, so I said, the vape shop.
Yeah. I, the one thing that they, when they collect cigarette taxes, they don't often name the individual business. If the business has a vendor which stamps the cigarette tax on pack that they buy the cigarettes from, that's who that is represented by that name.
But they only had three entities listed and there should be four.
Right. I appreciate you doing that.
Farms, Royal Farms, the gas, the little gas station.
Lees. And what about, is Cane's included or not?
No, it's not. Just over the line. Yes, over the line.
Okay. Uh, we're resolved. Ms. Anzavino?
Yep. Uh, on your town manager clerk, zoning administrator recruitment, we had, we were supposed to have a meeting last Friday. Unfortunately, it didn't happen. We have it tonight. So at the end of this meeting, you'll get the packet that I had for last week. On planning and zoning activities, I could, I'm surprised that you, you have the level of activity of interest in the town that you do. I've had a lot of questions about prospective business, businesses locating in town, in the business district. And I've worked with them to help them understand the regulations and the zoning ordinance. They, we also have some residents who want to develop their property a little bit more to, a little bit higher use that have separate lots. So I'm working with them as well just to make sure that they fully understand what's required and they don't go off on a tangent. We have an excellent relationship with the Caroline County Building Office. They won't issue a building permit until they have the zoning permit from the town. And so I've, we had a, actually a change out from a diesel to gas generator to one of the, uh, antenna sites for communications here in town. And, uh, changed out the generator, backup generator from diesel to natural gas, uh, to propane, sorry. And, uh, they wouldn't issue, the county would not issue the permit for the installation of the propane tanks until they had our zoning permit.
Great.
So actually had a call from a plumbing firm up in King George who's putting on a new, a new electrical panel on the house to power a guy's well, which doesn't require a zoning permit because that's just, you know, it's not changing the use of the property or expanding the use of property. County wouldn't issue the building permit for that either until they talked to us. So it's really good, there's a really good relationship there with the county. And I, I think you should be pleased as a governing body with that, with that relationship. Mr. Saul's a giver, has a box over there, a demolition box, and he's still cleaning the site. The tent's done.
So he still owns it?
Still does. Yep. And he has planned to turn it into an antique store, but it's coming along very slowly. I had a really good conversation with the vice mayor last Friday night about some of the problems with that because there's not much in the files here on those types of things. But, uh, so we're tracking that one as well.
I'm sorry. Good.
With the building, I don't know if you know, but my husband knew that it's full of asbestos.
That's what Ms. Schnold told me.
Okay, good.
And it's also full of rodents and rats.
Yeah.
He has no back door. And when it snowed, I could see the little footprints going in and little footprints coming out. There's no, if you notice, he's putting antique stuff in there. But I, how bad could it, if, when you go into post office, if you turn around and look, there's no door on the back. And I have not actually seen it, but I've seen the little footprint. As a matter of fact, I started taking pictures. I have them somewhere on my phone of the little footprints in the snow, coming in and coming out.
Yeah, I might see them at my house too, in the basement. But anyway, he can't put anything in there until he gets rid of all that asbestos, right?
It's packed to the gills. Putting antique stuff in there. You can see it all the way from the front and window now. You can see everything is packed.
It probably came out of the tent.
Yeah, that's what I shared is that it's been so long since we brought it up years ago. I said, I don't know if he's had any abatement done or not.
Okay. Uh, under general administration, we catalog, we're cataloging all of your door keys and keys to whatever we got. They were thrown just into the desk drawer. We now have a really nice little key cabinet up on the wall and the keys are getting marked and put in the key cabinet. So whomever comes and follows me and whoever follows the next person will know where the keys are and they'll all be kept.
Is there a key now for that?
Yes, I found it. I did.
Had to use a machete to get a, uh,
Yeah.
envelope out. It almost cut, so...
Key for what?
The mail box, right?
Yeah. And did you get a key to this lock here?
Which lock is on the door? I haven't tried it.
We kind of locked that lock up, didn't we? I thought.
We unhinged it because I took it off.
There's nothing like...
Uh, it's been redone. It's, it's been reattached.
There's nothing in there.
There's nothing in there.
Need to have a lock on it. Never been one on there, which is only at the last minute.
We also have, I've had conversations with, uh, website developers that specialize in smaller entities, smaller local governments. And there's money included, proposed in your budget for retooling your website. Uh, it's about $5,000. It's a one-time fee. Uh, you'll be able to maintain it yourself or with the assistance of the IT person that you bring on board, if you bring somebody on board.
But we, we still have to have the domain name.
Yes.
And that's locked up and you're not going to get it unless you get the passwords.
Yep.
We used to have the password.
Did you find a sheet somewhere in those file cabinets where all the passwords were listed? There's one in there.
Because I had, I had the password and I forgot it.
I, if, if there's no file in those that I've been able to find that says passwords, but...
It wasn't in a file. It was just...
Well, I'll go back through all the files again. I've been through them twice, but I'll go back through them again. Recapification, I've talked to UniCode and, uh, everything's on hold until you, as you know, continue to revise your ordinances. Uh, office schedule, uh, here is proposed and you've also got a copy that I provided to you tonight, which is the nice-looking copy which we'll place outside. Commissioner Noll, if you would put that up on the website or on the, uh...
Both places, post office and the website?
Yeah.
Well, excuse me, I can say webs, point clarification.
Not actually.
Facebook.
Facebook.
Yep. I'll be here on Thursdays with the exception of, uh, council meeting day, which there are five Fridays in May. Do you meet the fifth Friday or the fourth Friday?
I believe it's the fourth.
Yeah. Okay. So May 23rd, excuse me, May 20, yeah, May 23rd. Okay. Well, that concludes that report.
Thank you, sir. Board, commission, agency representatives. The planning commission, um...
Uh, Mayor, we, we've also got, uh, presentation of the budget, ARPA funding report, designation, banking center contacts, and temporary support services under that report.
I thought you went for it.
I was with that rep...
It just paused.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, big item. We're getting kind of a late start on this and I apologize. Days tend to slip by very quickly. But, uh, you have a proposed budget this evening and you've got the sheets, which the mayor was gracious enough to, uh, take the Excel sheets and blow them up so that they're readable. And you also have a memorandum in your packet, which was not in your electronic packet because it was just completed yesterday. But memorandum in your packet, which kind of is a budget message to you and has some discussion about, uh, the budget process. They have some discussion about your revenues, your expenditures. And it also has some detail on the proposed expenses and how they differ from the current year. It also proposes a budget adoption schedule. You have two alternatives to choose from. And then I've provided some recommendations for you to get involved in the budget process and maybe adjust your budget process for next year, working with your new manager. And introducing this, uh, I've, I've done more than 25 public sector budgets in my career, some of upper limits of $45, $50 million. And you have a budget which is about $250,000. But this was a challenging budget just by the fact that we don't have a lot of his, well, we have history, but there's no context to the history. It's just numbers. And so for the current year, for example, just to use your meals tax projections, you have $100,000 projected in revenues to be received in the current fiscal year for meals tax. Well, I've been tracking, uh, one of your new businesses, Royal Farms, very carefully since they came online with their January, February, and March collections. If they were included in your projections, six months, they weren't, okay, then you would be in excess of your projections. But if they were, you're going to be in excess of your projections considerably, probably by maybe 35, 40%. Next year, you will be, I kept it very, because I didn't have the context, it's still the same amount. So you can expect somewhat of a windfall in the coming fiscal year on meals tax if the economy holds up and if the revenues continue to be collected as anticipated. Just that, and meals tax makes up almost 70% of your revenues in your general fund budget. So that's some good news for you. On the expenditure side, your expenditures have been revised somewhat to take into account that you will be hiring a new town manager, clerk, trailer, zoning administrator. And we use the amount in the advertisement, which the council approved, as the personnel charges. And in the, on the first page of this, this memorandum, you've got a summary of your personnel charges, your miscellaneous charges, your purchase services, which is grass cutting, it's things like that. Utility costs, which is electricity for your streetlights and things like that. And required dispersions. That's for the volunteer fire department. You get money in, money out through the state. And that comes through revenues collected on insurance premiums. And that comes through, uh, revenues collected on insurance premiums. Uh, so you've got a proposed general fund budget, uh, in twenty twenty-six of a hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars of expenses. And that includes ten thousand, almost a ten thousand nine hundred dollar transfer or holding reserves. So that's undesignedated at this time. So there's some cushion in the budget still with that. In your utilities budget, that's held fairly constant. I had a long conversation, uh, with the director of public utilities, uh, and we believe that, but, well, the operational costs for the system are just fairly static. Uh, not much is going up. You will be facing, and it's noted in the report, in the memorandum. And we haven't pinned it down when it's going to be done by, but there, you're in the groundwater, uh, monitoring area or groundwater protection area. As the eastern groundwater protection area is designated by the queue. And the town subscribed to that and is part of that plan some ten years ago. And it requires that monitoring wells be drilled for your supply lines. And in talking to, uh, the director of public utilities, they're having it done in Caroline County now. They will have it done under the agreement that you have with them, but they will come and talk to you first about it because that is uh, something that they will handle for you, but they don't, won't make that, that commitment to that type of expense until they have the approval of the council, okay? That's written into your agreement. I did find that. And, um, by the way, that will be up for renewal in twenty twenty-six. Uh, so your utilities budget is seventy-two thousand dollars in, seventy-two thousand dollars out roughly, with a healthy dose going into reserve. I would note that I think it's wise that the town, and nobody likes to hear this, but if you don't do it and you get caught from behind, when you do need to do it, you're going to get just as much grief as if you do it in small bites. But I'm suggesting that you and your new managers take a look at revenues, expenses and needs of the system. Have a good meeting with Caroline Utilities and begin to consider some rate increases because the cost of water is doing nothing but going up for production and carrying for your system. And you still have significant debt. Uh, so yes, that's just a word about utilities, but no rate increase for this year because we didn't have the time to go in and analyze the detail of what may need to be done. And, you know, it's something that, uh, I think you need to talk to the utilities folks. Um, on the revenue side, no tax increases or rate increases. I have recommended that working again with your new manager, I'm setting the stage for new manager coming in because I'm not going to be here forever, okay? Uh, if I were, I would need a lot more hours to get these things done. You have those budgeted for your new manager at a more affordable rate than what you're paying me for what I, what I'm doing. I don't mind it, but I'm not going to be here forever. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm recommending that you also take a look at your planning and zoning fees. They're, they are very, and they should more reflect the cost of, uh, the cost that goes into an analysis or gathering data on a zoning permit or because zoning permits can be very time consuming depending upon what the, uh, request is and, you know, how it fits into your zoning ordinance. I think that you're also, you have a very simple planning and zoning fee system. I think that could be expanded. You've got, uh, zoning permits from what I've been able to find, you've got signed permits. And beyond that, I've been, had a hard time finding any other authorized, uh, revenues in planning and zoning. So I, I think you need to begin to take a look at that. Uh, and this is the heart. Okay, and I can do this because I don't live here and, but I need to be honest with you. You're one of few town, few towns in Virginia that does not have a more stable source of revenue, the real estate tax. You set the tax aside when you went through the annexation process, I understand, some ten years ago. And there was a moratorium, I guess, it's not a good word, but it's, you had a ten-year, uh, reprieve. Pope fucks out a ten-year reprieve and paying real estate taxes. Real estate taxes are the most stable source of income that a locality has. In the case of towns, it's not always the primary source of income. Uh, I know when I was in Warrenton as the town manager, we watched our meals tax grow and eclipse the real estate tax. And that was a community with a whole lot of value in the community with both business and residential. I know most, I know the town of Urbana where I live, they collect more in meals tax. No, they collect almost as much in meals tax as they do in real estate taxes. But it's a stable source of income. I'm not saying, I'm not proposing it for this year, but I think you need to begin talking about it. And you need to begin thinking about it because if the town of Port Royal, you have opportunities, but and you're conservative, I know that, but at the same time, if you want the town to improve, you have to make some investments and you have to have the resources to do that. So I'm just suggesting that you take a look at that. I'm not saying that you have to do it, but it's something that as a professional, I don't think I would be, uh, uh, acting in a responsible manner if active examining your budget and looking at the trends and what you carry, things that you would like to do, uh, it would be responsible for me to just say, okay, well, there's no other revenue sources. And that is one that you should consider.
I have a question about that.
Yep.
That's in addition to paying Caroline County real estate tax?
Yep, that's, that's, that's the trouble that you have with it. Uh, towns are overlay districts for counties in the Commonwealth of Virginia. You're not an independent city. If you were in a city, you would have more responsibility for delivery of service, but you also have your own taxes. You know, the real estate tax, personal property tax would be solely yours. In a town, on personal property, on real estate, uh, you are an overlay and your rate goes on top of the counties. And it goes directly into town services. Well, you know, you pay for streetlights now, okay? That's nice, uh, but you need a source of revenue. Currently it's the meals tax. But what else do you want to do in town here? I mean, do you want to begin more aggressively, uh, developing your zoning ordinance? Are you going to have a zoning administrator beyond the town manager? What do you want to do? Do you want to improve the appearance of the town? What investments do you want to make? Those are all the things that you should be talking about, uh, before you make any decision like that. You need to be thinking about it. You need to think about how, who, who you'll be working with. It's going to be the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer of Caroline County. And most towns and counties have arrangements with the treasurer, the commissioner, the commissioner will do the assessment. You'll have your own, uh, real estate book section. And the treasurer will do the collect, the collection of the taxes, maybe with a fee, I don't know how it would work here in Caroline County, but they would remit the money to you, just like they do now for collection of utility bills. Uh, but you have to have some discussion with them too. You just can't say, well, we're going to do real estate tax and say, hey guys, you're going to collect this and you're going to assess this. Uh, constitutional officers just don't react well when you do those types of things. So I'm just saying, think about it. Have some discussion about it because it will buffer you in times when restaurants close or when there's a significant downturn in the economy and people aren't passing through and buying meals here. Just, just a thought. Uh, on your expenses, uh, salary and benefits for the manager's position have been allocated in run lump sum for uh, salary. There's a small amount designated for administrative support for preparation of council minutes if you should require. It's a thousand dollars. Uh, continued, I've continued videotaping of town council meetings. That's a hundred fifty dollars for a meeting times twelve, which is eight hundred, eighteen hundred dollars. That's built into your budget. Uh, you're doing it on a trial basis now, but it seems to be working out and it will be attached to your website once you get access to it. Uh, I've built in, uh, funds for a new website for the town. Uh, I mentioned that I had talked to some website developers. There's five thousand built in, uh, five thousand dollars built in there. Uh, and there's seven thousand dollars total in that category. The other two thousand would be for IT support, should it be necessary. There's five thousand dollars built in for updating the town's comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan, I think you all know, is woefully out of date. And, uh, really needs to be adjusted to really, and to really begin to consider the annex area. Uh, and that's going to be handled with, these are expenses for your planning commission. Uh, these are, they're not going to get paid to do it, but they will need some access to some funds to be able to do this. So that's what those funds are for. Uh, and also because you're going to be updating your comprehensive plan and because you want to become a better planned, you know, managed, uh, managed community, I've included, uh, thirty-seven hundred fifty dollars for attendance of your planning commission members at the Virginia Certified Planning Commissioners Institute at VCU. That's seven hundred fifty dollars for five folks. It's, uh, about a three-month-long course. Beginning is onsite. In between is virtual and then the end is onsite. So those folks will, uh, be attending that. When they become certified planners, they have a much stronger knowledge base in the legal basis of planning and comprehensive planning and zoning administration, zoning ordinances. And just have a better understanding of really what good planning is, how it works, and they're exposed to what other communities are doing as well. It's a really good investment in training for, for those folks.
They have a test like at the end of it that they complete?
That I don't know.
Cause if some of it's virtual.
Yeah.
All of them are going to go online and look at.
That's a good question. I don't know. I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hazard a guess to respond positively. I'll, I'll look into that. Uh, and then finally in utilities, um, you've got built into utilities, but you have an administrative fee for Caroline County. That's been kind of, I don't know. The, the way that works is the expenses, the expensive retaliates up during the year, you budget a certain amount of expenses retaliation. Uh, during the course of the year, at the end, you have a true-up. That is where the county and the town sit down. The county says, well, we invested this much in sending staff up. There was, uh, permits to be obtained. Uh, there was testing. These are all the things that went into operations. It's either above or below what you originally projected. If it's below, they'll kick, they'll give you a rebate of what you've already paid. If it's above, then you owe them some more money. And the town manager really needs to be monitoring that a little bit more closely as to what's happening with that. Your new manager needs to be monitoring that. And Caroline Utilities is really easy to work with. They're good folks and they do a good job and they're responsive to your questions. Uh, my, my exposure to them and the directors just in Bowling Green and in here in Port Royal has just been, it's been really a good relationship. But he did inform me again, and I'll just let you know that this well is on the horizon. It's either in the coming year, he doesn't know yet. He's checking on it. It's either in the coming year or the following year, maybe the year beyond that. It could be in a range of his projection based upon the folks that they're working with now. It's somewhere between sixty-five and a hundred thousand dollars in adjustment. So it's not built into your budget, but again, it's something that you should be thinking about.
Actually, uh, I, I think我们应该 should start with a, uh, increase in the water rate, uh, in this budget.
Okay. But we'll need to do some research on that and, uh.
We, we don't have a hundred thousand per cap, okay?
Yeah. Well, it's something to be thinking about and I'll go back and research that and before we advertise the budget. But you need to advertise the rate increase at the time you advertise the budget. Uh, and we're running, I, I'll tell you what, you know, it's April, we're running out of time because you have some state mandates to.
We're, we're in May.
Oh.
We, we have some, we have some state mand- mandatory requirements for advertising and adoption.
Right. Well, do you think we could have a, uh, work session on the budget? Uh, we just spend time on the budget.
Sure. And, um. I've, I've suggested that now. I've got two options here for you as far as budget adoption, okay? The first one, if you accept, if you just wanted to move ahead from tonight and everything was hunky-dory and you didn't want to have any, you didn't, you didn't want to really talk about rate increases. Uh, we'd advertise the budget no later than, uh, May ninth, with the second advertisement of the sixteenth. Uh, public hearing through May twenty-third meeting and adoption, uh, anytime after May thirtieth. That's the accelerated schedule. If the council desires to have a work session, I kind of thought you might want to do that. Uh, prior to advertising, workshop session to be held on the budget no later than May thirtieth for advertising purposes. First week in June, no later than June sixth, that's the initial advertisement. Then you have to advertise the following week on June thirteenth. You have to wait seven days before you adopt. And your next meeting is on, uh, your, your public hearing would be no li- later than June twentieth with an adoption date of June twenty-seventh, which is your council meeting.
Uh, what if we had a work session sometime in May, early May? And, um, then we could, um, well, we have to have a special meeting then to adopt. Can we adopt a, uh, a budget or, or not so much adopt the budget, but have presented the final budget for advertising, uh, at a, at a work session.
You could, uh, continue this meeting.
Yeah.
To an acceptable day.
Okay.
For a work session.
That's a ticket. Okay, people, uh, what day in, uh, say, uh, we could, uh, May five through nine? Yeah, you did good work, Mr. Dan Zavino. It's just, uh, to do our duty as we should. Uh, it, it, it's an important issue. It deserves time and attention.
I, I would expect that. It's what you're, it's what you're supposed to do.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
We can do the fifth, sixth, the month. After work. To clarify.
So that'd be what, six-thirty?
Well, six is fine.
Six, okay.
It's six to what?
May?
No, I'm, oh, I'm at six PM until. Did, did you say the fifth? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did you say?
And they, I'm at nine.
The fifth, sixth, and, okay, I thought you were talking about time.
Monday, Tuesday and Friday.
And then we were talking about.
And then I said after work, because it's.
No, she, Aunt Miss Golden had a good point. Uh, we were talking times, six, six-thirty. And then she was also caught talking about dates, so.
Okay, you lost me somewhere in there. I got it now, but what time, I just need to know what time, so.
So if we're looking at, do you think an hour or two hours is what we have?
Why don't we, uh, we'll cap it at say an hour and a half. We'll have to get it done because Ms. Dan Zavino has about an hour and a half trip back home, right?
Just now.
Pardon me?
An hour.
One hour?
Yeah.
So, hour and a half is okay. So you said the fifth?
It's Monday. I'll be best because I can actually start it.
Uh, I hate to, my wife was having a cataract surgery that day and I'm going to have to be with her.
Sorry. So that's out. What about the ninth?
Ninth is good for me.
You can tell we're partying, I was, um.
Yeah, yeah.
I gotta tell somebody, they were going to be eating on Fridays and they were like, they started laughing.
Okay, what about, uh, May ninth, Friday at, uh, six PM?
All right, I can.
All right, I can.
Does that work for Ms. Golden?
I'll reschedule my kids till Saturday, yeah.
Ms. Wolkerson?
I don't know. No, I don't have my physical therapy on the blog with me. I have no book.
May ninth, you said six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Ms. Chanel?
Yes.
Ms. Long was good for the night, and Ms. Anzavino is good for the night.
Do we need to have the work session recorded?
I don't think Mr. Boyd needs to be here for work session.
Just to clarify.
I mean, if you really want to be here, I think the town's happy to pay you, but.
Is that going to be our presentation?
It'll be, um, that's a good point. Why don't we get a, a resolute, uh, motion to have a work session, May ninth at six P M. For the purpose of, uh, arriving at a budget. Does someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Golden made a motion that we, town council has a work session, May nine at six P M., the purpose of which is to establish a budget for the town. That's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Chanel seconds the motion. Discussion, discussion, hearing now. Uh, Ms. Chanel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wolkerson?
I guess yes, since I don't know what my schedule is yet.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Long votes yes. Please note that we need to, uh, get this written up and posted on the Facebook page and also posted hard copy on the door of Town Hall, hard copy in the post office for the work session. Okay, that resolves that. I think we've done the budget. Anzavino, you're down to ARPA review.
Yes, sir. Uh, also included in, in your packet of electronically and hard copy tonight is discussion about the ARPA funding and how it's been expended. Because there was some discussion about this at the March twenty-first meeting. It's, it's clear that the town has received the funds. You received two disbursements, equal disbursements of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and two, two dollars and fifty cents in twenty-one and twenty-two, and those came through the state, through the Commonwealth, because that's how the ARPA program funds came out. They were allocated by the state. I also, I understand they were invested in a certificate of deposit at that time or somewhere. So I've listed out your certificates of deposit here, and as I just learned a little while ago, these really have no meaning other than they're certificates of deposit, and they're not tied to any particular fund. So within the total certificates of deposit here is a hundred nineteen thousand dollars minus that which has already been expended, and that will have to be determined.
And that's the important thing, uh, as well as lying, sitting in a C D with C D, irrelevant, we can cash it. The money is fungible. That's the, that's most important.
It's there.
It's fungible. Oh, that's the other port, port, there.
It's there.
It's there. The one thing that's important though is that the town, remember early COVID, we bought, gosh, ten thousand dollars worth of masks, and we still have a chlorine machine.
Yeah, and all the chlorine that goes with it.
Yeah, uh, early COVID, the town bought ten fifteen thousand dollars worth of junk to protect ourselves. Well, yeah, to protect the townspeople.
Those were bought out of another grant program. They were not built, they were not purchased under ARPA. They were purchased under the, the other per, the initial program, the two programs.
Okay, okay. You're satisfied? Okay.
Yeah, the CARES Act, it also helps people pay the water bill.
Yep.
Oh, so that's not under ARPA either, because it has utility relief funds. That was under the CARES Act, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, some of you, well, based upon the report that's documented, some of the money for utility relief was taken out of the ARPA money as well.
It's supposed to be the CARES Act because.
Yeah, wait, yeah, half ARPA funds.
That's, that's the report that's documented, is of eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. So, okay, in any event, the way, the way you got to the expenditures on your ARPA funds were that there was a committee appointed of the town council based, this is in the minutes, in twenty twenty-two. The committee consisted of Mayor Wong, council member Golden, and your town manager. And that they were supposed to develop a plan for the expenditure of funds. Here's that the committee was relatively inactive, and there was no activity reports or discussion about the committee meeting after, uh, any reports on ARPA after eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. It is my understanding when Mayor resigned, when he resigned, that, that left two members of the committee, the town manager and Ms. Golden, and that there was no council member or elected official appointed to fill the third seat. There's no evidence of that. Because the deadlines were approaching and you had to have an allocation of funds and get things underway because all the funds have to be expended. The town manager at that time delegated responsibility for developing a plan to Ms. Golden. And there had been some expenses that the town council had approved, but then it fell on Ms. Golden to work up a plan and to get things done. And I have been working with her, and I would note that what she has accomplished and what funds are allocated for and obligated to and have been expended on, all are beneficial to the town, are well thought out, and she has not, she has done her due diligence to competitively price everything that was part of the purchases. So, running through the table on, I, I'm a terrible secretary. Don't believe in the pages of my reports, but it's page two of the report. And it's the ARPA funds history from twenty twenty-one to twenty-five. Uh, the report of eleven twenty-three noted utility funds in the amount noted, town playground equipment, that was a green playground frog that was installed, the town hall roof, the A E T device that you all were supposed to be trained on tonight, and then new windows at Town Hall. All of those had been, all those expenses have been completed. In addition to that, and planned and in process was the power washing and painting of Town Hall, and the painting is now done. The empty cans have been catalogued, uh, so, and they're stored in the new storage building. And the building looks good. Now, we do have a little bit of paint left over, and Mr. Fortune is going to paint the rails because the rails are different, a little bit different shade than the trim of the windows and the trim around the building. So he'll paint, he'll paint those. So the power wash, the building was power washed before it was painted. And then the paint for Town Hall is included. That was all of an expensive, around fifty-five hundred sixteen dollars. And in the right column is the running total of what's left. On-site park improvements, there was a storage shed and a pavilion purchased and installed, or purchased between eleven twenty-three, twenty-three to twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. Both those have been installed. Uh, those were a total cost of seventeen thousand seven seventy-two ninety-six. On-site park improvements post twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. Some plannings, uh, and there is a sketch, there's the original sketch, and then there's the revised sketch of what is going on back behind this building. There are some plannings that have been done with, by Green Acres Nursery. Uh, there's some mulch which is on order for the playground. It hasn't been delivered yet, I don't believe.
They have the money. Um, I asked them to hold it since everything else was held up because I didn't want people to come and start taking mulch.
Yep. So, uh, that has been ordered, but it has not yet been delivered because the playground equipment hasn't been installed. There's camp coated outdoor furniture which has been delivered. Uh, new playground equipment which has been ordered. Uh, there's concrete mix and timber materials for the playground equipment and the border of the parking lot that's ordered. Labor costs have been calculated as noted. And so the playground upgrade had a total of twenty-two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars fifty-seven cents. Well, it leaves you with a balance of eighty-seven nine five thirty-three, according to Brent, based upon the data, the information I have. And then there's flag pa- banner replacement. The flags at the town, uh, most towns fly have been ordered. Matter of fact, I think most of them are over here. They came, most of them came in today.
I called them this morning, and they said they were returned because they had the wrong address. I thought those were those up there.
Yeah, they, they were delivered by U P S today. So the cost of those was, and we have new hardware as well, which Mr. Fortune is going to mount on the. Okay, it's mounted. So you have a balance of twenty-five hundred dollars and three, twenty-five hundred, three dollars and fifty-two cents in the ARPA funds. Originally, Ms. Golden was planning on some new Town Hall parks, uh, Town Hall and Park signage. New sign for Town Hall, uh, something for the green, a new message center. And, you know, rather than sticking stuff on your, on your door, it would, the town of Bowling Green has a really nice little message center. So, and then there's a Park Rules sign. You don't want to just send folks out there and have them going all night long, so. Ms. Golden has been looking at Park Rules signs, and it's, you can get them through the canned presentations.
I love that accustomed, so you could put your voice to something.
But everything that would need to be done of signage, if the council has no objection to it, would have to fall within the twenty-five hundred three fifty, fifty-two cent budget that's left over.
On what?
Two thousand five hundred three dollars and fifty-two cents, uh, which remains as far as unobligated funds. Everything would have to fall in or below that. And you'd have a message board, you'd have some park signage and some updated signage for this building. Site plan and the revised site plan, as I said, is attached to this. You know, this was thought out, it just wasn't thrown together. And so you've got a good investment in upgrades for the youth of the community. And you've got a lot of good improvements to this building that really probably you don't have to pay for because it came out of the ARPA funds, but.
Oh, excuse me. One thing that really needs to be done, I don't know if we've ever had the building treated for termites or inspected.
We have, we have a pest control service.
We do?
Yes, we do. We have a, good, we have a contract for that. Yeah, but I will check with it. Check with them to make sure that they're good.
I've never seen it in the bills. I think Allison had that done because they thought, didn't somebody come in there, a termite thing?
Oh, yeah, because we had a spider problem.
Yeah, someone came in, but I can't remember which company. Was it the ones from the string?
I can't remember the name of the company. I just authorized payment form for an inspection.
Okay, good.
Yeah, they, they.
But I'll check on the termite inspection, make sure it's been on the termite.
Yeah, yes, because they were coming to that threshold going into the office.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of the summary of how.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, uh, official bank contact designated. You know, I think you all know that I've been frustrated since I've been here. I had to recreate passwords, find files, and sometimes the files don't exist. And we just haven't had a whole lot of cooperation in getting information from the former manager. She just doesn't want to talk to us for whatever reason. But I just found out recently, well, I found out when I had a questionable expense on credit cards, that they could, that the subcontractor for Union, Atlantic Union Bank couldn't talk to me, so I'm getting that changed. Because there was only a sole designee to speak on behalf of the town to the creditor company or their, their designated, or the bank's designated. The bank has been sending bank statements to, um, an email address that I have no record of. It's townofportroyal.v a, uh, seventeen forty-four.v a.
That's dangerous.
That carries the whole, that, from that time.
So.
Carry for years.
But I, bank was, bank was trying to reach Allison Fincham. And I called them back and they said, well, we can't talk to you. You're not a, you're not a signatory. And I said, okay, uh, but I said, we need to know more information about the interest that we earned on our CDs, about our accounts.
Okay.
But, so here, here's the remedy. Included in the memorandum is a proposed motion which will go up to the Atlantic Union Branch in King George, and I will send it on Monday or maybe over the weekend if I can get their ad, their email address. But I knew that the town council, the town of Port Royal designated the town's previously appointed interim town manager, town treasurer, John Anzavino's primary designee and point of contact with Atlantic Union Bank to ensure that the interim town manager treasurer has the ability to conduct town business and obtain access to all account information so that the town council may be kept fully informed of the town's financial position. I further move that the town council, the town of Port Royal designate, and I want a secondary on this, whoever wants, whoever the town council wants to be, the secondary, designate blank, a duly elected council member of the town of Port Royal as an additional designee and point of contact for Atlantic Union Bank should the interim town ma- town manager treasurer be incapacitated, leave the employee of the town of Port Royal. So I've suggested that as a motion. You just need to fill in the blanks as to who you want to be.
I think we designated Monica Chanel. Good one. Do you still want to do that?
It's fine.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Okay.
What is this now? I'm sorry.
A backup in case he's not available.
Okay. So I'll get that in motion with the bank if the.
Okay. Who would like, I'll, I'll make that motion. Can the mayor can make a motion? Uh, I'll make that motion. And it's, uh, Ms. Anzavino read, and, um, if you could email me, the, uh, Ms. Anzavino, if you could send me that in a Word document, I'll then put it onto a fresh piece of paper and the vote, who voted.
Okay.
And execute it as the mayor.
Okay.
So then, uh, is there, I made the motion. Uh, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it. That's the thing, to make her the thing.
She, she's the alternative, yeah.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Okay, uh, let's see. Mr. Long made the motion. Ms. Anzavino has a hard copy of the motion which she will email to the mayor as soon as possible. The mayor will then rewrite it, including the vote, and attest to the motion and send it back to Ms. Anzavino, correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion made, motion seconded, discussion. Any discussion? All in favor, Ms., uh, Ms., uh, Chanel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wolkerson?
Yeah.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Long votes yes. Thank you. Motion passed, unanimous. Okay, that resolves that. We're on a roll.
Okay, last thing I have for you, mayor, before we go into close-up. Now, you have some other items to discuss, but the last thing I had before we go into close session is just, this is notification of the council that we are bringing on, uh, Celine Olpers. Celine Olpers.
Excuse me?
At a rate of twenty dollars per hour.
Oh, well, she's going to be doing the mess. Wait on, I was going to spell it all out. Oh, well, she's gonna be doing the mess. Wait on, I was gonna spell it all out, but, uh, since she's gonna be doing it, she knows how to spell it.
And I've noted that she's Port Royal resident. And I've also noted that in your current budget, you've got eighteen thousand dollars, uh, allocated for expense for, uh, town clerk. And you've spent proximal, uh, fifty, fifty-eight hundred and fifteen dollars because there's, there's room in there to, for additional expense. Uh, there's twelve thousand, a little over twelve thousand dollars. But I've taken that action as your interim manager because the money was allocated, appropriated, the work needs to get done, we're falling behind.
Thank you. Do you think you need a motion to?
I just.
Thank you. Trying to move things along.
Okay, that concludes my reports, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Orders and commissions, uh, planning commission, uh, wants to get, uh, several maps. Uh, one of them will be a large map about, uh, six feet long by about four, four and a half feet. But it will be an aerial of the entire town and with the tactical maps, so you can see it. And then there will be smaller maps that will zoom in on detail. Uh, if you wanna detail all the corner, then there will be the aerial blown up. And, um, yeah, questions about how are we gonna plan for this? What, are the issues involved? You'll have a map right there. Instead of putting it on paper, wanna put it on vinyl, uh, such that these things can be rolled up and used again and again. And, uh, I think, uh, we have about fifteen hundred dollars left in this current budget for the planning commission. And we'll try to keep, uh, within that. Um, and then Mr. Anzavino, I think, has budgeted already for the other issues, uh, cited in the agenda for the budget. That concludes that, uh, action items, uh, appointment of Bill Henderson to the planning commission. Uh, Ms. Rowe, uh, declined to serve on the planning commission. She was included in the original motion for the planning commission members. Ms. Rowe, she lives over at, uh, the Fox Tavern. She's the sister to Johnny, um.
Terry. Oh, okay.
My name's Terry.
Um, and Mr. Bill Henderson said that, uh, he would like to serve in her place. Therefore, would someone like to make a motion to put Mr. Bill Henderson on the planning commission for a term to expire?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, is, when do we expire?
Yeah, December twenty-sixth, two, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, uh.
Definitely.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put his term, uh.
December three first.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-six.
Correct. Okay, Ms. Golden made a motion to appoint Bill Henderson for a term to expire December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Noel, uh, seconds the motion. Uh, motion's on the table, discussion. Any discussion hearing none? Uh, Mr. Noel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Walkerson?
Yeah.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Alex Long, yes. Thank you. Motion carries, unanimous. Uh, next thing, request Commonwealth attorney to use whatever means necessary to get the passwords and the recordings. Uh, we don't have the January.
And that was my fault. I brought the recorder here and I recorded it. I didn't exactly know what happened. It shouldn't be on the recorder.
It's not.
That's my fault.
The January of Allison was still here.
Allison was here.
Oh, okay, then I recorded February.
You recorded, there's the special meeting that was on that tape.
Okay, that's.
That's, that's, and then a, a whole bunch of little things. But we're still missing all the tape recordings, to the best of my knowledge, missing all the tape recordings of, uh, not just the January meeting, but past meetings.
There was two reporters, the old one and the new one.
Well, uh, oh.
They were both in there.
Mr. Anzavino was just giving one, kind of, you, all that Mr. Anzavino just said.
Yeah, I, I've gone through the supply closets. I've gone through the desk. I've gone through the file cabinets. I have one handheld which Ms. Golden provided me. There's no other recorder there in the office. I don't know where it is. Uh, I've searched for it. You know, it could be that a better person than me could find it, but we don't have it and nobody has told us where it is. You know, they're, say this, say this, but, and I'll give you an example. I served as a, as a local government chief executive for twenty-five years. I had good boards and, not so good boards. I served in the town for thirteen years as a town man. The first ten years were just wonderful. I had the best mayor, council that you could, you could ever ask for. Last three years, I had a mayor who came off Capitol Hill who was a lobbyist and thought that he knew everything better than the town citizens and the town staff and made life miserable for everybody and practically destroyed the town and was just tough to deal with. Well, after three years of that, I was eligible for retirement. I decided to retire and take a job in consulting, which I did. And I'm glad because it was a great life there too. But I had tough feelings about that mayor and I had tough feelings of, of that council and the inaction the night that I decided to retire. They said, they were shocked. And they said, uh, the next day they came back and they said, well, what is it? The money? And I said, yeah, no, it's not the money. It's how y'all act and react to one another and how you react to staff and how you don't defend staff when they need to be defended. And I said, I'm, I'm doing this purely because I can, but to send a message to you folks. Well, three, five years later, I was still getting questions from the staff and some of the council members about things that had happened, and I always responded to them. That was my professional responsibility to lead the town and leave the town better than I found it and to provide all the information that I had in my head that I could. I haven't had that, uh, opportunity to enjoy, I haven't enjoyed that opportunity here from your former manager. She doesn't wanna talk to the town, to anybody at the town. And so we've got passwords we're having to recreate, we're having files we're having to recreate, we're developing processes. It's like building from the ground up. And so if there's information out there, if there's materials out there that belong to the town, this is a last resort to compel that information to be turned over if it's available. And that's what the mayor is asking for. But I want you to know that I've been down this road before as the, as the person who saw. But I had the obligation, I felt, as a professional to interact because you just have to ta- you just don't become a town manager because you get a paycheck. You take it on because it's an obligation, it's a calling, it's a service that you provide to a community. And, you know, I, and we need that information, is all I'm saying.
Can I say something regarding that?
Right.
Hey, Allison did the zoning, town manager, clerk and everything, less money than that.
Custodian.
But she, she loved Port Royal, she put her heart into it. I know that we had, I don't know if it was in a file, I think it was, maybe the second drawer, all the passwords to everything. And the town email address, I think was changed because someone had gotten hold of it. I'm, I'm trying to think when it was changed, and I can't remember when it was changed to, but it.
Yeah, I, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about personality. I'm talking about professional obligation.
Professional obligation, if professional obligation was afforded to her. Now, I've said before, on the advice of her attorney, that she has retained, that he advised no contact. Now, I hired an attorney and I was paying my money. I'd do what they told me to do. Now, all of this could have been avoided if a simple apology would have been given, but that wasn't given. So, and when she came on board, when Terry left, Terry sabotaged her every move. She had to go and build everything from scratch herself. And that's what she did. Now, I used to have the GoDaddy password. I don't know what it is. I never wrote the password down. All I did, I found my notes from two thousand twenty-one, is I wrote down the steps to how to get from, how to get from point A to get to where we need to be. I found those from two thousand twenty-one when we started, when done, and I just decided, started to help Allison. Um, I had the password. It was in my head. I haven't been on there in three years. She hadn't been on there since October. She doesn't remember the password. I don't know how you can, I don't know how it's decided that the information that's in somebody's head can be forced out of them. Especially when the town hall and the office was rekeyed without council's knowledge. And six days, the office was breached. So, I mean, as far as that, she has information in her head. And I just said, move forward. We got more fish to fry and bigger fish to fry. God forbid if she did drop dead, we'd be in the same boat.
I'm seeing somewhere in my paperwork at home, I have the town email.
Well, we, I, we know what it is. It's town of Port Royal. And I know, because I was here with her the last day, all of the stuff from her town email, she forwarded it to the town email. It's the town of Port Royal, I think, town of Port Royal.
V a.
Dot v a, yes.
Dot com.
Mm-hmm, that's it.
Okay, well, that, that's not the issue, the email. It's everything else, all the other passwords.
The files are here. I mean, the files are here. I can't help, I don't know how to find it.
It's just stuff written on a piece of.
And there, there are files that are in the system. I don't know how to find them, but I don't think that's a prosecute.
I've s- I've s- I've queried the system based upon the records that are in the system. But, okay, if, it's whatever the council wants to do, but the fact of the matter is, I'm just informing you of what, I've informed you before of what I've found. And we're at a point where we'll, we'll bring some folks in. There'll be an obligation for cost. We will continue to recreate passwords. But I have not been able to find the passwords in the files. And it's important that we have them so that we can access the website. We also have, we have accounts with the Virginia Resources Authority. We have accounts with utility companies. We have a ti- accounts with other vendors and they're all password driven. And so we're recreating, we're having to recreate all of those. And, you know, it would just be simple if somebody would just, if the person who had them would just give them to us. And I know that she's not going to do it, so this is a last resort to try to compel that. And I didn't bring it up. It's a mayor request that it be placed on the agenda. But, you know, I, I'm trying to do the best job I can for you folks.
Those folders are in there, not to interrupt you, but like Virginia Resources and all those, there's folders in there for all of.
Oh, the folder, there, there's limited folders for some of this stuff. If you go in there, there's empty drawers of files. And I don't know where the files went.
A professional would have files and there'd be a logical filing system for this very, very critical information. Uh, Mr. Anzavino states that he has looked and has not found it. Uh, since, uh, Ms. Fincham does not wanna talk to us and she only speaks to Ms. Golden, uh, why don't you give her one more opportunity? Um, but, um, uh, there, there's an obligation, fiduciary obligation to reach out to the proper authorities and seek to have the information brought to this town.
I understand what you're saying and it would have been a moral obligation for you to apologize for the way that you treated her. Uh, we, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you, and it's gonna wind up into a lawsuit against the town and it's just gonna be nasty. Because this is not, the, the awful behavior has gone on for years, too long, and it's just ridiculous.
I'm not gonna be blackmailed or extorted.
I'm not blackmailing you or extorting you anything. I'm just, you said that I was the only one to talk to her. And I'll tell you, it is what it is. Do whatever you feel is necessary.
Okay, fine.
It has to be voted on.
Is there a motion? I tell you what, we'll get, we'll go back to Ms. Fincham and ask her if, out of some professional courtesy, if she would talk to Mr. Anzavino. That would be most helpful. I don't wanna go down this road. Uh, it is Ms. Fincham who is forcing this issue.
All it would have taken was an apology. You could have gotten everything you wanted out of her.
I'm not gonna argue that. I'm not gonna argue that. That's it. It's that very simple. Uh, there's no apology. I did nothing wrong. And again, I did nothing wrong.
We were here the night, we, we're here the night that happened.
What happened?
You screamed, you yelled, you phoned at the map, you blocked her exit and getting out of the doggone office. You slammed the door.
No, I didn't.
Donna?
You're the one that slammed the door, you, when you did not.
Uh-uh, we're not going there. We're talking about before. We're talking about before. Donna, were you not here that night?
I wasn't in there.
We were here.
So I was in the office.
We called both of y'all in the office, is all I said.
Uh, this isn't getting us anywhere and, um, we're gonna move on.
Um, may I say something quick? I wasn't involved in all this. Um, could you two go, Mr. Anzavino, just kind of look in the drawers in case something jived in memory?
But I didn't know if.
I mean, I'm sure he's already looked in the drawers.
Yeah, I'll look again. These are public records. There, there are certain things, personnel records, uh, meals tax, business licenses that, you know, are beyond the public eye, the application and the financial reporting. But, you know, just looking through the files, there's, you know, they're all foible. So, anybody wants to give me any help and be a second set of eyes, I would appreciate it. I'll be back here next Thursday.
I know Terry used to keep everything in the middle test store. She just, we took everything.
She took it in house and it just.
That's.
I'll, I'll take another look in the files, you know.
That's all I, we can go on meals tax thing is, is in with everything on whatever restaurant it is. Everything's in that folder. Royal Farms and everything should be in one folder.
Yeah, they're, they're, most of the meal stacks, well, a lot of the stuff's very major. That's all I'll say, but.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, discussion items, uh, town greens, signet options. I think we've covered that with the.
Other signs.
Pardon me?
Other signs.
Other signs. What are these other signs?
Town greens, options and issues.
Mm-hmm. I don't know. You didn't, you didn't print off the other signs. I have them on my phone. I can pass them around.
If you pass them around.
All right, I had, I had, um, the signs, the message center. I had allotted twenty-five hundred dollars for a message center. I found one for eleven hundred. Um, it needed to go vertical or, and I thought maybe it might, I thought maybe going this way. But I thought maybe if the wind cut it or something, it would be easier for the door to break because it's gonna be glass. So maybe this way, but I'll show you when I have.
Can you get any that aren't glass? Plexiglas?
Yeah. Oh, I can ask them.
Um, you can also, right?
This is what, this is, it's in ground. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
You said plexi?
No, I just, I don't wanna commit my husband to it. Because he builds all this stuff.
Oh, okay.
He did the one down at the, uh, boat room. And he does, looks like the glass and cutting it and everything. So this has glass. Now, you're thinking of putting it at back where the one that we took down was?
Standalone, Bowling Green has one, like, as you walk up, like, right next to that bench there.
Uh-huh.
It'll be standalone, so we don't have to block the new windows.
Eighteen by twenty-four? That is kind of small.
That's what I was gonna ask y'all too. Do you want a bigger one? They have all different sizes.
That would be like, like that, like two pieces of paper. Yeah.
Well, I can get it bigger, but it'd be along that.
Can you post on both sides or just?
Well, I was gonna get it on one side.
Don't they still have one down there by the, uh, that place, what do you call it? The bi- uh, brick building that's falling apart?
I see him.
Yeah, isn't there one still there?
I don't, I haven't looked.
It was there last time I walked, but I walked around there.
We, we need to, we need to move on.
Something similar to that.
You want me to make the decision on the signs? Well, you want me to make the decision on the signs, Dan?
Instead of doing 1100, why don't you?
No, I mean, I have a sign for a Port Royal Town Green sign.
For what?
Port Royal Town Green, please enjoy responsibly.
Uh, well, you have $2,500 left, uh.
I understand. I, trust me when I say everything's within budget.
I think Ms. Golden was trying to keep the council apprised of what she's going to do, and if you have no objections to it, uh, she's, the budget's still there.
But by consensus then, and get things moving, uh, I'm okay. Chanel?
Um, I'm fine with it.
Ms. Walkerson?
Um, I would like to see them before you all place the order.
Oh, yes, I'll do you.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, I'm going to write your email.
It's just my name, MattHotmail.com. I'll be with it, y'all look at them.
Okay, we finish with sign.
I think you had festivals to the end.
Yeah. Uh, Chanel, uh, you have.
Well, we're basically out of time. Um, HPR is passing, I've gotten emails from Carrie Holland, I've gotten emails from Bill Guzik, and, um, and I've gotten emails from some of the pirates. Uh, I know Donna has said that she doesn't want to, um, do pirate festival, maybe something else, so I was thinking, maybe we could just meet at some point in time to discuss what we want to do. I think HPR will partner with us. I don't foresee us having time to get a fall festival going, but I would like to do something, and this is something David has been pushing for as well, um, to get official, large festivals going again with support of HPR, which would also give us maybe some county support, which we did not have before. So, this is a discussion, I don't think we need to vote on it tonight, but can you advise me, does that sound okay, to respond to HPR, that we will entertain festivals for next year?
Go for it.
Is that okay?
Yep.
I just want that, uh, there's, based upon previous years, but there's $3,000 of seed money allocated in the new fiscal year as well, so there's some money to work with if the council approves it as part of the budget.
Okay, let's see. Uh, you gave us the VRA audit requirements, Dominion Energy rate increase notifications.
Um, what's, I was just looking at that, what is the amount? It's, it just says, there's nothing on there.
No penalty. They just want the audits for their records.
No, that's the VRA, the Dominion one.
Oh, okay.
It says there's going to be a new.
Okay, the reason you don't have it is this is the rate filing.
Okay.
It's available in our office if you'd like to look at it, and this is the other rate file. I typically don't make copies of those because their council members typically don't read.
Uh, I just want to know what the basic increase is going to be.
You, you can add it.
Yeah, cool.
Okay, are you satisfied with that?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Um, Jeff, we're going to go into closed session, therefore, if you would like, go ahead and start packing up, there's no reason for you to camp a course, a closed session, therefore you might as well start packing up, and, uh, when we come out of closed session, uh, we'll take written notes. Okay.
It looks to some, yes.
Let's, are we ready? Should I read the, uh, closed section for suing?
Yeah, I think you ought to do this the right way, so it's, this is, this is verbatim out of the state code, and.
Can we have a quick break before we do this?
Well, thinking that if the council is agreeable that we could go into closed, read the closed session, and then, once we're in closed session, take a recess for, uh, five, 10 minutes?
Okay.
Yeah. And that way, uh, Mr. Boyd can pack up, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Do you want to read the, uh?
Okay, this is promote, uh, proposed motion entered closed session. I move to convene a closed session with Port Royal Town Council in accordance with section 2.2 dash 4711, paragraph 8, subsection 1, to discuss personnel matters relating to the selection of a new town manager.
Okay, uh, is there a second to the mo, uh, excuse me?
Somebody needs to make that motion, I, I don't.
Yeah. I, I would like to make the motion, which, uh, Mr. Anzavino just read. That's the motion, and it's written here in the agenda. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded, uh, discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, Ms. Chanel, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Walkerson, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Ms. Gray, uh, Golden, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Long votes yes. Uh, we're in closed session, having been in closed session, we'll take a 10-minute recess.